I'll move it as with amendments.
I looked at you. Never said you would. Can't you telepathic, please?
I thought you were trying to leave.
Okay, the May ninth, two thousand and two, regular council meeting minutes? Any errors? If not, could I have someone move it? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. May eleventh, special meeting? A mover, please, if there's no errors? Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. So, for my report, I wasn't really that busy. I attended this strategic planning meeting on the May seventeenth. Well, I kind of went backwards on this. May ninth, I had a global interview on the third anniversary of Chukake. And we discussed also the multipurpose evacuation center. And the fact that High Level is the hub of evacuations. And right now, we're playing host to about a thousand people, so. And that was flood-related, not fire-related. So, we discussed those on May ninth as well. I had a six-thirty interview with Chad. Same idea. May ninth, CBC Radio. May tenth, the Canadian Press. May eleventh, Real Talk with Ryan Jefferson. May eleventh, CBC French Channel. And no, I couldn't speak French, so I spoke in English. May twelfth, I had another CBC with Julia Wong. And then on the twenty-second, the Edmonton Journal released their opinion. Well, not theirs, our opinion piece. Opinion editorial. That's my report. Anybody want to ask me questions? If not, could I have someone move it?
I'll move, Mayor.
Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carry. Council reports? Deputy Mayor.
May eleventh, I attended the special council meeting. Also, the same day, the final EOVP course on service delivery. Then on the May twelfth, started the EOVP course on land use and development. On the May eighteenth, the ready board meeting that the census regulation material came from. And then May nineteenth, section two of the land use and development EOVP course.
Any questions? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Anderson.
May eleventh, I attended the special council meeting, and that's the only thing I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Dwyer.
On the May tenth to eleventh, I attended the Alberta Crime Prevention Conference in Canmore. On the eleventh as well, I attended the special meeting. And on the seventeenth, I also attended the strategic planning.
So, what come out of your conference?
It was good, actually. So, I was actually just reviewing some of my notes. Unfortunately, they didn't let us go home with the PowerPoints, but I took pictures with my phone. So, the main keynote speaker was actually a gentleman from The Hague in the Netherlands. So, he talked about how the Netherlands did a significant decrease in their, basically, their petty crime. And with simple things, actually. So, like, a lot of rehabilitation, like, in prisons. A lot of education to citizens, like, about having an extra light on and surveillance and things like that. They also targeted repeat victimization. So, generally, a lot of the victims of crime are repeat victims of crime, so they target those guys. And, I mean, basically, in within the youth justice, there was a program where youth would not get a criminal record. Basically, they had the opportunity to right their wrongs, do service to the community, and then, basically, everything is dispunged. And they've noticed a significant decrease in offenses with that. And then offering, like, things like cognitive behavior therapy, job training, things like that to a lot of the repeat offenders. They've noticed, like, a huge decrease in their crime rates. There's some other ones that, a lot of it was basically targeted to organizations. So, there's actually, I got some nice information from the Rural Community Policing Society. Basically, similar to, like, Citizens on Patrol, but instead of having, like, basically, people were walking the beat or kind of, they basically have an app on their phone, and anyone can download this. So, if you notice a crime or something that doesn't seem right in progress, you go on through this app. You report it, and then it goes into the RCP, and basically, it goes that way. So, a lot of good information. Maybe not a lot to, like, elected officials, but still, a lot of good take-home stuff.
And what have they noticed with this rural crime app? Have they got a lot of big reports that are non-unfounded?
Not a whole lot. The rural crime prevention is more, it'd be more slated for, like, the M.D. Like, farmers that, like, in a rural area to say, hey, I know this person's farm or this person's property, and this doesn't seem right. They haven't really noticed a lot of unfounded, but it's nice that they don't have, rely on people volunteering and going out and doing, like, these patrols, like Citizens on Patrol. That they, and, I mean, anyone can download this. There's also in our CNP app that they talked about as well, where it shows not, like, investigations and progress and things like that in the area. There's a way to actually to put reports in online through your phone as opposed to calling the complaint line.
Yeah, that just kind of, like, kind of sends a red flag, like, if everybody can access this app.
Yeah.
And they can say, and say to the RCP, well, there's a crime at this location when they're actually triggering that location.
I think it's meant for more the, like, obviously, if there's, like, a violent crime or something like that in progress, you wouldn't, like, you know, go onto your app and do that. It would actually just put it in a work queue. So, as opposed to, you need to respond to this right away.
Okay, any questions for Counselor Dwyer? All in favor? Come. Oh, sorry. Counselor Jessamyn.
Welcome, sorry.
Yeah?
Okay, on May the eleventh, I attended the emergency, or special council meeting, sorry. Also, that evening on the eleventh, I attended the High Level Community Policing Society monthly meeting. On the seventeenth, I attended the strategic plan. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Counselor Lambert.
On, oh, sorry. May eleventh, I also, sorry to you. May eleventh, I attended the special meeting as well. And then on May seventeenth, I attended the strategic planning workshop. Which was really good feedback, good to see everyone was happy with their plans from the Community Counter Event. And can't wait to get started on it, which is all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Welk.
On May seventeenth, I extended, or attended the strategic planning session in the evening. And that's the only meeting I have to report. But I would like to take a moment to address a meeting I had with a High Level resident regarding the removal of trees. Or that discussion of tree removal behind, I guess, in between Bison and one hundred and Sixth Street. I met with one of the adjacent landowners at their request to just come down there and see, you know, what exactly the concerns of the neighborhood were. And so, we walked out back into that area, and I actually had never been back there before, so it was good to see. It is a nice green space. I have to agree with, from what I'm hearing, the majority of the adjacent landowners don't want those trees cut down. We talked about the safety issues, and this landowner also agreed that, you know, for the safety concerns, you know, looking at more of a selective removal of the problem trees. The second part of this discussion was whether or not it's feasible that walking paths back there, and also a path that goes across that ditch, because it is used a lot as a pedestrian walkway between the two areas of town. And there's a kind of a makeshift bridge in there, but, you know, if we were going to go in and do some work, and I think that's what the town was after, was feedback from the public. And I think they got it, or we got the feedback. So, it seems pretty unanimous that nobody wants that whole place just cleared out, and I have to agree. It is nice aesthetics for the neighborhood, and even, we even talked about comments from non-adjacent landowners, how just nice it is to have that backdrop in there. And then the birds and the wildlife that come with it, whether or not you want deer in your backyard. So, that, and then, and then, you know, whether the town should be spending money was the other thing we talked about, spending money on putting a walking path in there. I like to think that it would add to our trail system network. However, it may tie in, not directly, I guess, to an already existing network. But it would add another pathway that would get from quite a long distance, you know, rather than walking on one hundred and Sixth Street or walking in the alley. I expressed that I didn't believe an alleyway was qualified as a walking trail. So, I thought it would be nice, and, you know, and I think it would be, I think we should look at that. Of course, we would look at costs and everything like that. But I think the, to address to the public, the town is putting out a new notice to those landowners, so watch for that. There's not going to be, and if I'm correct in saying, there's not going to be any immediate action or anything in that area according to this notice that's going out.
He's saying for the removal of safety hazards.
Of the safety hazard trees, yeah, yeah, but nothing, nothing that would, like, activate what most people's fears were of going in and clearing out the whole area.
What would you say about the walking path, or do you believe we should be wasting money?
Well, the owner that I spoke to wasn't sure if it was, I guess, a responsible expense to go in and develop a walking trail. One thing that came up on that point is, and I would like to maybe see what the feedback from the public is, in the more heavily wooded or wet areas where we have walking trails. It seems like people say that the mosquitoes are so horrific that nobody uses them, like, as general walking trails. So, that's an interesting thing to think about, you know, and this would be kind of one of those areas, it's pretty wet down there. If, you know, if it would in fact be utilized, that, you know, I don't have the statistics on that. I know we have a lot of trails that are on the open and some that are, you know, it's more secluded in the wooded areas and in the middle of summer. You know, are, is that the complaint from pedestrians? Is that the mosquitoes just make it unwalkable?
Well, the trail system was developed because the people of the community wanted walking trails, number one. And the town doesn't waste money, number two. We see which is feasible and which walking trail connects to other walking trails. And it doesn't have to be a wide paved, it could be a different type of walking trail. And maybe people don't use them because there's so many mosquitoes, but so many of us do wear mosquito spray and walk through those areas or bike through those areas, otherwise, we wouldn't be caught up in the summer.
Well, and that's, I mean, I just, I don't have, personally have that information, so is it a common complaint? Or is it, you know, is it something that?
We can't do anything about the mosquitoes. We can only change the qual, our health, the quality of life of people.
Does the town spray?
No.
We don't do that, we can't do that, or we don't do that?
We don't do that, we used to do that.
Because that's another issue as well for people that, you know, to consider if, I guess, like, on the environmental side, but.
Josh?
I just wanted to agree with them, and I've had a few landowners complain about the same thing to me. Especially with that specific walking path, it doesn't connect to anything.
It will eventually.
Eventually, but why are we actually in the middle, I wish, when we start?
That's why we're bringing the plan back for people who have their safe.
Oh, for sure, and I just, I just think again, there was a big miscommunication with the whole.
I don't like the fact that people say we waste money.
No, I agree.
We would.
That, maybe, maybe that was a wrong choice of words, but, no, but, I mean, just, like, to really consider, is that an expense? And, I mean, we don't have to be offended by that, that, you know.
It wasn't an expense that we were looking at for this year.
No, no, but, I'm just, I'm just relaying some feedback that I got. And I, and I, and I, and I do think that, you know, we would, we wouldn't, like, overspend or, you know, spend inappropriately on something like that. But I'm just providing the, you know, the information that I received. And, and I guess, yeah, just like Counsel Lambert said, like, you know, maybe at the moment, it's not tying into anything specifically. So, is it, is it a justified thing to pursue? Or, you know, like, from looking at this notice, like, are we looking at just maybe getting that bridge, the trail over the, you know, over the ditch? I think that would involve making another, because there isn't actually a walking access. It's another drainage ditch that's going out to Bison, right? It's not actually a walking trail, it's just another, another waterway. So, so there isn't even really any access to that back area where they are crossing. Once you get over into the alley, then there is, there is a, you know, a roadway.
There isn't any except that, into that subdivision.
Right, right.
Except the roadways.
So, you know, whether or not even that was looked at, it's just like a walkway literally to get from one side to the other versus a trail along the whole section. Either way, it's a nice green area in town. I think it could be developed. I am for, like, trails in general and making places accessible, so. But I, I would, yeah, I'd agree that, you know, I don't think we would want to just go clear it all out. There's, there's not enough, you know, green spaces or mature green spaces like that, but, you know, it has to be safe, so.
Yes, and, and that's why they will bring back the walking system, the walking trail system that was developed. So, that people can come here and voice all their concerns.
Right, and this was, this was for that for the public, it wasn't something that we were just going to go in and do, so I think we've gotten our feedback now.
So, just a comment that you can't do anything about the mosquitoes, you actually can. Years ago, Rainbow Lake had done extensive research. Apparently, the average mosquito lives its entire life within two hundred meters of where it was hatched. In other words, they don't really migrate, they may blow around in the wind. And Rainbow would come up, it was an environmentally friendly backside or something like that, that you just spray onto standing water. And there's two types, you can get it for mosquitoes and mosquitoes and black flies, and it's super effective.
So, even in specific areas, you can?
You can just go around, it's, they had a little thing mounted on the back of a quad that they would go around and just spray standing water and really, really effective and not overly expensive. But not the big fogger that I had when I was a kid in Saskatoon.
Exactly, where it would.
We'd run down chasing it, and it was just a white cloud.
That's what they used to do here, up and down the valley.
Streets. Yeah, so there probably are newer, yeah, newer products.
We couldn't research.
Municipality may want to look at it.
Well, Josh has a fancy dancy neighbor with twenty mosquitoes out.
It doesn't work, it totally doesn't work, I think. So, I would kind of suggest, can we look into this, is it back to side, or?
Yeah, Rainbow Lake has all the information, they sprayed it for years.
Yeah, I think the residents would be very happy with that.
Yeah.
Much more than a walking path.
I don't think you'll have anyone complaining of wasting money, quote unquote. What's that?
I don't think you'll hear anyone complaining that that's a waste of money, quote unquote.
Well, there are some of us that might, maybe not.
The mosquitoes are there, the mosquitoes are there, they do serve a purpose for other wildlife and stuff, but anyway.
That's not for us to debate.
No, but to get rid of them.
We have to.
Yeah.
Well, it affects the larva, so you have to get them when they're, before they hatch.
All right.
That's all they have to report.
Thank you. You kicked the hornet's nest.
Oh, okay.
Could I have someone move council reports, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. Council's action list, anybody have any concerns? Hearing none, could I have someone move it? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. The project status report?
I have a vote, it's starting to fill with percentages now that things are moving along.
Yep. Okay, could I have someone move this? Oh, sorry.
So, for Director Strong, so with the grass could watering truck, we can't even place an order? Like, they won't say it's six months or a year, or?
So, thank you for the question, Counselor Einford. We did order a truck, and it was kicked from the queue, so I do have an option. I had talked to the National Dealers, and they said there is a potential option now available. The issue is, we'll be paying full retail, and current pricing looks like it's outside the budget, so I will be looking at the pricing and potentially coming back to council. They say they have it two months ago, but our first option was in the queue, and then it was removed, they quit fielding that series of trucks.
Madam Mayor, let me just add, Director Strong's comments, one of the things I've asked the departments to do is review the capital plan, the longer-term capital plan. And our intention is to bring it back to the Committee of the Hall in June, just to discuss some of the supply chain issues we're looking at, to the fact that we may have to keep ordering stuff well in advance of the budget year.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move the project status report? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. Any comments on the events listing? They haven't changed from last report, so could I get a move here on that, please? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carry. RFD for grants in place?
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will address that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Annually, we bring back our write-offs for our G-Pot, which is the government's grant in place of taxes. And in recent years, we've slowly gone down to the government paying from twenty-five percent to fifty percent of the taxes that they owe to us. And so, as of the twenty-twenty-one tax year ending in December, December thirty-first, we have twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents that is outstanding and will not be collected from the government. And also outstanding for twenty-twenty, in, in the past, council defeated the motion to write off the grants in lieu of, or grants in place of taxes. So, administration's looking at the write-off of the full amount for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two oh eight. And I'm just looking for some direction and looking for any conversation on it.
I think the conversation is done on it.
Yeah.
We tried to get the government to pay their debt, and they didn't, so I don't think we should waste any, waste any more money on it. And we'll evict the people that live in there. You're not even using it, are you?
Yeah.
But your offices haven't moved, just your... Thoughts from the rest, Council?
And we haven't received any further communication other than the twenty-nineteen information that went out from the government for the grants in place of taxes, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So, clarify for me. The government owes taxes on certain entities, and then they have the grants in place of taxes, which should normally cover that. And we're writing off amounts that we didn't get either of? And there's, so when we had decided not to do that in twenty, for the twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one?
Last year's.
Okay.
We tried to collect the taxes.
So, and that's just common, then, it's like eventually you just can't collect, so you just write it off and the government just?
Yes.
So, they don't, the province doesn't pay taxes, they give us grants in place of taxes. And last year in the budget, they announced that they were reducing that by certain percentages over the coming years. In other words, they were downloading more stuff onto all municipalities, not just us. And I think there was a number of municipalities last year that sort of took a stand and went back to them and said, hey, you know, we don't agree that this is right, you're just downloading this, and we would like you to reconsider, and they haven't done that. In my mind, this would be no different than us sending them seven hundred grand for lost opportunity costs on the fire and seeing if they paid it. They'll just ignore it.
So, we, for bookkeeping purposes, then, assign a tax value for government properties?
Yes.
Knowing that you won't get that, but that generally, they would give you grants in place, and now they're just cutting that back, so we're, so we just basically have to accept that.
Right.
They, they, sorry, sorry, they base the grants in place of taxes on the assessed value.
They've been cutting back on, like, we used to get social housing grants in place, and I think we have sixty-five residences here. And about four years ago, they just said no. So, that was like a couple million dollars in assessment cost.
So, it was almost ninety thousand dollars a year in taxes.
And this is scheduled to increase next year by another twenty-five percent, is it?
As far as I know, we haven't received formal communication from, from them, but, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit out of our budget. Like, when you think about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just from social housing and from the Alberta government grants in place of taxes, that's, that's a big chunk of money for our small municipality. And there was no communication on it when council, Mayor and Council brought it to the government.
Do our neighboring municipalities, everybody have generally the same concern?
Yeah, we have a bigger concern because we, then say that's many, because we have more government property here, more social housing. So, it is a big, but, what do you do? Take it to court? We have no money. All right, could I have a motion on that, please?
I can move. Alternative number one, the council authorized the write-off of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and eight cents.
All in favor? Opposed? Hmm, guess I gotta be tighter. I'm in favor. This is, you can keep.
Deal with it another way.
All right. The property tax recovery auction.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will also address that.
So, I'm looking for council to, as per the MGA, council does set the reserve bids for any tax recovery public auction municipalities do have. And they also establish the sale conditions for that auction. I have provided the four properties that we do have that were listed on the twenty-twenty-one arrears list, which are now going to auction. Two of those properties are commercial properties. And it is noted in previous meetings at Committee of the Hall that council doesn't necessarily have to establish the reserve bid by the assessed value of the property. I did provide some alternatives. I did provide some alternatives that we could, administration could obtain property appraisals for a market value. It's just that council does need to, each each parcel of land has to be offered for sale as close as reasonably possible to the market value of the parcels. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the assessment value. So as per section 419 of the MGA, it just has to be close as possible to the market value of the parcels. So administration's just looking for some direction on how you would want the public auction this year. Town of High Level is known for not having any tax recovery public auctions. And I don't know if we're going to receive one or have one this year. Normally, in the past, residents, when they receive their letters and any interest letters that do follow, they come in and they have up until the auction time to sign a tax arrears agreement with the municipalities. So normally, they they like to come in in that time period and do that. And I did note the balances that are outstanding and when the last payments were received for those properties, just to give Mayor and council a better idea of what we're looking at for these properties on arrears and outstanding. And this does include the 2022 levy that was sent out.
Have some of these properties been in arrears before?
Yes, yes, they have. And it's kind, and it's an ongoing thing with municipalities is you have up to three years before you hit that auction. So when you hit the arrears list, so 2021, you hit the arrears list, your your property is in arrears more than one year according to the MGA. And then the next year is your three years, so more than two years are after the arrears list. So once properties hit that, that's when they sign the agreements to get them off of the arrears list. And then we, they might continue to do that, to stay on the arrears list and then pay what they need to to just be off of that three-year listing.
So you can't make them pay the full balance?
Um, we do provide that in the letters that, you know, please pay up to the current year, and then we'll put you on pre-authorized payment for taxes and give them the options. But no, you can't make them because as per the MGA, we, if they pay the full balance, we take them off notification. Then they got sort of another three-year period until they get back to that auction period, and they go through that cycle again.
Any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, we did have a discussion with the administration this afternoon. 419 of the MGA allows council to set conditions that accompany the sale. One of these properties contains condemned buildings. We're just quickly checking here.
It's, and it only, it states that that any conditions that apply to the sale, so in 419B.
So council could, if they wished, include as a condition of sale, the removal of that building within a certain period of time.
What about a condition to the person that it belongs to?
I I believe that's already been given to them.
So if they get off the arrears list, do prob, even?
My opinion is that's been handled through the Public Health Act, so that overrides the municipality's ability to deal with it.
It's been through the public health, did you say?
Yes.
So?
We can double-check on what order's been placed on that building.
So either way, whether someone buys it or whether that person comes and gets it off the arrears list or starts paying, that building has to come down?
I'm not sure, and again, I'd have to check to see what the order, the public health order is on that building. I know it cannot be entered, but I'm not sure if there is an order to destroy. What we're suggesting is, is that if it were to go up for sale and were to be sold, we could put that on as a caveat from the municipality.
Okay, I thought that part. The part I don't, I want to understand is if the owner of that property comes and pays, can we still make him take that building?
No, we cannot, because he's paid his taxes.
We would have no authority when it comes to any improvements on the property when it comes to being condemned as per like a tax recovery auction or anything like that. Unsightly, maybe in our bylaws, we'd be able to change something, alter something about the property, but not so much order him to remove it unless we do look at the public health order. The other option, I know that we do have to set reserve bids. And I did want to give all the information to date. It doesn't mean we have to set them right now. We can have the, we can have the public auction within this year. But looking at options of maybe market value appraisals and looking at something closer to market value, I know that our assessment is based on that. But from our communication in the last public auction, there was enough, there was about five people that came to our our public auction last year, and they are very interested in the properties. But because the assessed value was nowhere near what they thought the property was worth, there was no interest because our reserve bid was set for that. There is the option that if a parcel of land doesn't go for auction and the municipality does take ownership or does do a municipal acquisition of the property, we can do an auction the next year and possibly look at more of a better market value. Let's say if we improve the property or if we removed buildings from a property, it would be more, we can get it assessed as, say, a vacant land property or get a different assessment for it and do a better market value of that. So that's also an option. But it would be definitely council's decision because once you set the reserve bid, then we can set the date and do all of the advertising for the auction.
Yes.
So on that particular property, is that the one with the assessed value of 236?
Um, no, it actually isn't. That's a different commercial property. It's the assessed value of $55,080.
So is it possible that we could do a market value that reflects that the buyer would have to remove the building? Like, we know what it's going to cost to do the lead-in. I don't know any particulars about this property, but let's say that it was going to be $50,000 to remove the building. That means the market value is really $5,000.
Actually, that's a really good question.
Yeah.
Does that violate the market value rule that that the government establishes? We can follow up with that.
Well, we could present that to an appraiser, present that to.
We can ask the department.
Just if it's already, if there's already an order in place that says it can't be entered, the building has to come down. No one's going to buy it, and they're not going to buy it for assessed value and then spend another $50,000 knocking it down because that's not going to increase the value of the property by a comparable amount.
And the, and the balance owing to the municipality, so, is only $2,252. So that's definitely something that we.
Can we table this until we get more information?
Sure.
I think it's difficult to make a.
Did you want to to do alternative to possibly to get, obtain property appraisals from an independent appraiser for the purpose of setting reserve bids?
I'd like to see what comes out of what Boyd says.
Well, just, there's no sense, in my opinion, doing the market value if we can't say, taking into account this is where it's going to cost you to get that to be usable and.
Because there's no value with the building.
Exactly.
No, but there's, there's more value in the vacant land, so the value's going to go up once the building's off. But it's the cost of getting that building off that I think should be reflected.
We can definitely do some research for that, Madam.
I could take June 24th.
You need how many days for most? I guess we can postpone the time.
Whenever the reserve bids are set is only when I can start the advertising, so.
Madam Mayor, committee.
Yes, please. All in favor? Carry. Thank you. Thank you. So the debt management policy.
Madam Mayor, the post-debt management policy was brought forward to council, committee of the whole. This chair's really old.
I was trying to sit up higher.
Okay. It's presented again for council's review and a decision on its adoption.
Do you have any questions of the CAO on the debt management policy? Could I have a motion, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. 13.4, the RFD for the film industry crew?
Madam Mayor. They may form a crew then. Madam Mayor, the administration is recommending the appointment of Adam Kent, Michael Chandler, and Brian Wischak to the high-level film industry task force.
Whose rising report was that? I think it was Jan's. Okay, doesn't matter, we'll just, okay, so is there any questions about the three nominees? If not, could I have a motion to? Uh, Council Welke, all in? All in favor? Carry. 13.6 is the municipal census regulation discussion.
Madam Mayor, 13.5, the Tourism Relief Fund.
Oh, sorry.
Director Rolfe, let's go to her side.
I get to sit on the floor, too. So, excuse me, back in in November, I had come to council in regard to applying for an application for tourism relief funding for the town for a bribe of different items. About two, three months later, I worked with the Highland Friendship Center to apply for tourism relief funding for their cultural walk, Museum History Walk. So the the grant people from the Western Diversification Fund had contacted both myself and executive director, and they felt that they, the application went to two different people, each one. So we got together, all four of us, and had a discussion. And they felt that they really liked the Museum History Walk and the cultural park and felt that there was ways to make a stronger application. They wanted to work with us to find the best way so there might possibly be a way of approving some funding. With an indigenous applicant, you could apply for up to $500,000 with the Tourism Relief Fund, whereas in a municipality, we were, it would be maxed at $100,000. They did have some concern, and at this point, there was only $200,000 confirmed funding. So that was a series of grants between Highland Friendship Center, myself, who'd applied for, for the Friendship Center, the Community Revitalization Fund, the Heritage Grant Fund, and we received some sponsorship funding. So they felt that we needed to be a stronger applicant for the $500,000. It didn't necessarily have to be matched, but there need to be more funds put towards that. So altogether, the project, I put in the the conceptual design for council to review and the probable costs. So it's it's close to, close to about a million, maybe seven dollars, a little under that for the entire project. That's both sides. So what we'd be looking at is is applying for $800,000 for this year to do a portion of the entire project and hoping that council might approve $100,000 towards the Museum History Walk, which actually comes out into a probable cost of $300,000. So the rest of the funding for the museum walk would be through joint funding with Highland Friendship Center. So I'm suggesting that for a strong application, our best, I think, way we can get funding entirely would be to rescind the motion that council made earlier and it, to put $100,000 towards the Museum History Walk from our Tourism Reserve Fund and that we put together a joint application with Highland Friendship Center and the town to the $500,000.
Do you want two motions there?
Do you need to rescind the previous?
I definitely rescind the previous motion.
But what about the application and the $100,000 from Tourism Fund?
I'll put it down as all, three differently, rescinding and then $100,000, and then let approved the joint application, so.
You could do just two motions, Madam.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions on particular? Could I have a motion to rescind, rescind the resolution, please? Council Jessman, all in favor? Carry. That council approve $100,000 from the Tourism Fund for the History Walk? Council Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. And council approve a joint application from the Relief Tourism Relief Fund with the Highland Native Friendship Center? Council Lambert, all in favor? Carry.
Thank you so much.
I love this part. I can't wait to see it.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited. And the, as an aside, the architect that's working, I guess, just received an award from the Canadian Architect for one of the projects they did in the Calhoun. So they're, they're known to be quite unique, so we're pretty excited for the project.
I think it will be a great addition to our community.
Could you add a little extra for new chairs?
Well, I was thinking, all I need is a cushion, the way that it was. Of course, the table's a little high.
So 13.6 is the municipal census.
Madam Mayor, I believe the deputy mayor wishes to address this first.
So this was brought to the board's attention at the regular meeting last week. Apparently, the province is reconsidering whether or not to allow municipal censuses to be done, and they are looking for feedback from municipalities on what they may or may not do. Certainly, one of the areas that has been an issue up here is how they count the shadow population. For example, one of the sticky points has been, in order to count someone in the shadow population, they not only have to live in your community, they have to work in your municipality. And so here, the issue is, if there was a camp set up within High Level, but all of the workers are working in Mackenzie County, you, we couldn't count them. Mackenzie County couldn't count them because they're not living and working in the same municipality. So I would suggest that that would be one of the inputs that we could give back to the province that that they would look at where the people are living as opposed to where they're working. Because it's where they're living that is the municipality that's providing the local services. The poster child for this in the last few years has been Fox Creek, you know, where you have literally thousands of people living in the community but working in the adjacent municipality. Yet, you know, the roads, the demand on the cross-center recreation facilities, all of the rest, is being borne by the host municipality, but they're not getting any increased funding because of that. So one, I think it's a huge plus that the province is looking at allowing these. But two, that they're willing to look at input from different municipalities as to what should or shouldn't be included if they do decide to go this way.
I agree with 120 hours, like, you have to be working because like you said, the shadow population, like, they sign up and say, we're going to be working, but they're not working. So there has to be some changes there. I do not agree with recreational residents because how can they be counted in two communities, in their summer home and in their forever home?
Well, I, what they are, they are utilizing the services, and during the period of the census, they are resident here, so they should be counted here.
I don't agree with that. Like, if I live in in Five Star for for three months, and I have a house in High Level, if I'm living in Five Star during the census, then Five Star should get it. Level, if I'm living in Five Star during the census, then Five Star should get it in not High Level?
The shadow population, I think they, there is a question on that accounting.
Like, I think they're paring down the shadow population for working, but they also want to include summer villages and students. Like, I don't agree with that, because the, the city or the town where they spend the majority of their time, if they're somewhere else, are not going to get the count to say it's a family of ten.
But again, they're looking at restricting, as always, the period that the census can be done, and that may be one of the things that we put back, is to change the season that the census is done, to maybe, you know, focus on some winter months or something like that.
December. I just think they have to figure out a better way, if you're going to do that, like, if they're going to go summer villages and everything, then they should say, okay, you're there three months of the year, you're there, there should be some sort of split.
But again, it's where the person is during the time the census is taken.
I know, but if it's a family of ten, there goes, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of tax fund.
Okay, but, you know, we also have to be careful what we wish for, so with a set of about four thousand people, if they were to do a census today and put us at fifty-one hundred, we're now suddenly paying for our C N P.
We're paying for it anyways, that argument doesn't hold water anymore.
We would be getting way more than we're paying today. No, but, you know, I think for us, counting the shadow population is certainly important, and it's not something that we've been able to do.
But we've never had a shadow population in the town of High Level.
Oh, for sure, when there was camps and stuff operating here on the industrial side, for sure.
Thirty years ago, maybe?
Not that long ago, within the last ten years.
The B and E camp that was there, that was the only one?
B and E.
B and E.
There'd be a camp in there right now.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we're currently doing a, sorry, Counsel Welke, an inventory, I believe that was presented to council earlier, of the temporary winter camps that people are lodged in in the industrial area.
I would love to see what that is.
Yeah, and we're also getting them licensed, the ones that are there, so they're proper.
But don't forget, it's not, you know, we have a thousand hotel rooms, there's lots of people that are here.
But you have to be there in a certain amount of time, you have to be there for thirty days working before you can even be gone?
Okay, but that's one of the things they're talking about, is reducing some of those attributes, right?
Because we tried that with our hotels, and they wouldn't let us do it.
But again, we had the problem, they're living here, but they're not working here, so we need them to change that, and if they're living in your municipality, the fact that they're working in an adjacent rural municipality shouldn't, shouldn't negate the fact that we get to count them.
Or that might harm our neighbors?
But they don't get to count them anyway.
I'm talking about the community members that go out and work?
We're talking shadow population, we're not talking residents, so if you have a house here.
Yeah, but if those people work in a camp in Grand Prairie for six months of the year, then that Grand Prairie's going to get that, not the community.
But if it's, if it stays the way that it is, no one gets to count them. Just because they're working there, you don't get to count them if they're not living there. It's a circular argument, right? Like, I'd never agree with how they've done it, and I really hope that they'll change it.
Well, I haven't slightly agreed how they counted, but I, I see holes in it.
Oh, nothing is perfect, but.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, summer villages should not get that assessment or that count. That's, I thought that was the point of this, was to go back to the government and, or the point of the discussion?
Sure, that's one of the things.
Or is that we were just supposed to read it and agree with what's here? I thought we, I thought as a council, we were sending these into the government or something.
This is a government document, they put this out for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I know, but do we just get to discuss it, or do we get to send stuff in and say, look, we don't agree with this?
They're, they're looking for input by.
They're looking for input, and that's why it's here, so that we can give them input.
Well, that's my input for shadow population.
So you, Madam Mayor, you agree or disagree that those shadow populations that are living in, are not working here?
There wouldn't be a shadow population living here. They're, they're usually the working people. So are we going to count Chateauneuf this year, if we had a municipal census?
That's what I'm saying, if that was what it was, then we'd be over the five thousand mark. This hasn't even been introduced yet, so counting this year is impossible, and we're already almost at the end of the counting period, right? The counting's going to be done by, what is it, the end of June?
What I'm saying is, I agree that places like Fox Creek should be able to count that shadow population, not the neighboring municipality, because they all live in the hotels and everything in Fox Creek, and Fox Creek cannot count them and get the money that comes with it, so they can fix their streets and all the other things. But I do not believe that somebody that has a permanent residence in a community can have a summer home somewhere else and be in that summer home and be counted in that municipality, and come back to their permanent home or their permanent residence and not have to, we don't get to count them, so we don't get any money for them.
I guess it all depends on where they're actually living at the time of the census, right?
Well, that's just what we're arguing. Like, I don't agree that you should be able to live here, you know, like, three months of, or six or seven months of the year, and then live in your summer home for three months of the year, and they get all the count, all the money for it. Do you get them the same?
Yeah.
Do you? Yeah, but what? You could disagree on.
No, 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 I just, I just, like, you're, you're, you're trying to get the best accurate count that reflects the volunteer on your services and community.
Yes.
So when, so if Fox Creek does it, why, wouldn't, I mean, maybe we're talking about two different.
We are talking two different things.
Okay, so, but, so the workers that are living here but working out, you agree we should be able to count them if they're living there when the census is up? Okay, and then the other issue is, where the, like, I have two residences in different places, like, you can only be counted once.
Yeah.
But if I was down in my other residence during their census and I got counted there, I mean, you, there's no control over that, you, you can, you can't, you can't.
No, you can't.
Just fill out the census.
Counting toys in double dip.
Yeah?
It's very hard to control.
Well, I have no problem with the, the summer residence aspect, that that's not counted, because you are paying taxes there on that, so they're getting their money no matter what. Here, I'm talking about people that are living in camp, living in hotel, people that are living at Aspen Ridge.
I agree with you on that aspect.
Are working, but, sure, the, where you're talking about a separate residence, they're getting the taxes anyway. A lot of these people that live in camp don't have a residence anywhere, and so they're not contributing to anyone's tax base.
Well, and it's not necessarily the tax, it's the, the, the money that you get from the gas tax, well, I guess.
But that's the thing, it's all per capita funding, right?
Yeah, I know, it's a per capita funding that we get. Anyways, that's my.
Madam Mayor, we could also make another suggestion, one of the things, and it ties into the count of the shadow population, most of the shadow working shadow population in High Level is gone by April the first, mid-April at the very latest. Currently, the way that it's written, you were only allowed to do a census from April the first to June thirty. Our, our suggestion as administration is perhaps council will also write in and ask, with ministerial approval, that the municipal be able to set a census timeframe that is most beneficial to the municipality. Fall might be better for us, early winter, there's a number of times a year, January through February.
Those would be great times to do it, but we can't get people to do it in the summertime.
Fair enough, yeah. This is more allowing you to the regulation, not the practical, the practical side of actually getting it done.
So then, down to this proposed changes at the very bottom on the municipal census undertaken on a federal census year, the proposed change is that municipal census conducted will not be included in the municipal bears, so what will they use, the past federal one, or the past provincial or municipal one?
But that's one of the things that we can, that we can put in our comments.
Okay.
Well, we'd like to.
I think it should be, if the municipal has undertaken a previous census, it should be based on that, that's my feeling.
Depends how old it is, right?
Yeah, but I mean, like, Ericery does one just every year, they do one for sure every federal census. So I should think.
The community like Ericery, it's expanding all the time, it's still their benefit to do one annually, maybe, you know, pick up a thousand or two thousand residents every year, so that won't be more than a census.
And this one, and this is just a clarification for my own thing, where it says determining the population figure for a municipality that conducts, conducts a municipal census, for municipalities that conducted a census, checks were conducted based on past trends, new dwellings and household size, they're going to delete that and do an audit and inspection program with our administration?
Well, I, I think they're reserving the right to do an audit and inspection program to verify the census figures. One, one of the concerns of the government has been municipalities padding their population numbers, or that that may be happening, so they just want to put that in. Actually, if you look under the purpose, I think it's on the first printed, or page of print, down there's a number of bullet points, and one of the things that will not be reviewed, but it's included in their new V P R, is the methodology for statistical extrapolation of, for non-contacted dwellings and refusals. So that's always one of the concerns we have with federal census, is that they will have a dwelling count that is a couple of hundred lower than ours. So if those are places they have not contacted, or if they've been refused, and if refused to take the census, the provincial model will take that into account, so it will extrapolate for that population, and that's a fairly major step for municipalities.
As long as they don't go on a dwelling count, because as you know, there's more people living in one dwelling.
They, they have, I'm sure they're going to change it, because they dropped the, their proposal, their algorithm was quite complex, so it, it, it works off the average number of residents in the, in the municipality for the number of dwellings, there's a number of factors that are in there, it's.
But as you know, our dwelling size hasn't increased, but household size has.
Yeah, so that would be captured in the other censuses that are actually completed.
So how would you, as a municipality, capture that? You can do a dwelling count, but are you going to go and see how many people live in there?
No, 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 Madam Mayor, what I'm saying is that this procedure the government's proposing has an algorithm to capture those people. It won't be a one-to-one, it will be far higher than that.
Well, it says proposed change is an audit and inspection program connected with the administration of the municipal census. And you're telling me they're going to have an algorithm to tell how many people are in the house?
That's what it says under purpose, and just under their preamble.
I don't agree with that.
But it goes in the municipality's favor.
Yes, that definitely goes in the municipality's favor.
So rather than putting a zero there, they'll have a formula to say, on average, there'll be, you know, two-point-one people, or one-point-seven people, or whatever.
Those are my concerns, I hope you've got them all down.
It's, it could be, it's, it probably goes in, but I believe I have captured them, yes.
Anybody else have them? Other than the hockey game started?
Cat, Lord.
It just started at eight forty-five, seven forty-five. Okay, correspondence, was that just for information?
No, Madam Mayor, if you would just, if counsel could make a motion to make a submission to the Edward Municipal Bears for the census.
Okay, could someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry on. Correspondents for information?
Madam Mayor, just very quickly on this one, we just wanted to make a note for council that our current agreement or contract for natural gas expires at the end of 2023. We have given permission to our energy associate to bid on R F P for 2024 and beyond. Currently, we're tied in with electrical prices till 2027, so we'd like to extend our natural gas as well. Unlike the electrical, where we're tied in on a gigawatt price, in this case, we're in what is called a shaped block, and that was the decision that was made the last time. So seventy percent of our, of our gas price is fixed at a buck seventy-eight, so we actually have a very good price for natural gas. The other thirty percent is variable, so the gap between the variable and our fixed rate now is, it can be quite high. The market peak on April the nineteenth was seven dollars and five cents, and that does not include carbon tax, which is another three dollars and twenty-six cents. So we're paying a buck seventy-eight, and the peak was seven dollars and five cents, so this, this has definitely been a beneficial program. The other thing, and I know council discussed this earlier, Michelle did give a number of items over there that, that talks about what is driving the price. The war in the Ukraine has definitely caused a great deal of speculation, even, even within North American markets, European markets especially, but mainly also in North American markets. North American suppliers have managed to give about ten percent of the North American supply over to Europe to, to basically compensate for the lack of Russian supply or the decrease in Russian supply. There has been a huge shift to natural gas-fired electrical generation in North America for two main reasons. One is the phase out of coal, which is considerably cheaper, electrical generator, so with the coal going out, something had to be found in natural gas is what was turned to. The other thing that's really driven the increase in natural gas is green alternative energy, because windmills and solar panels must be backed up by natural gas generators. So the more green electricity that goes on the market, the more natural gas gets burnt, and the more the demand for natural gas goes up. So the sun's a little covered, too, but of course, there are days, the wind doesn't blow and the sun doesn't shine, so that, that has to be generated somehow. And of course, the other issue there, Madam Mayor, is the carbon tax, which continues to climb on the, which is tacked on to every gigajoule of natural gas that is used. So anyway, we will let you know the results of the R F P, it probably won't be until this winter, but we just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. There's also, she's got a little graph on where the exports are and who's exporting on the last page that she provided.
Okay, can I have somebody move up for information, please? Counsel Lambert, all in favor? So I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening. Hopefully, you're all on the flames side, go Flames. Who cares? How come you guys are watching the hockey game when you're supposed to be at council meeting?
It just popped up on my alerts.
Hey, some of us are here, and we should be going.
Do you have any questions in the public?
I was just going to mention, I wonder if you guys are aware, our, this last weekend, it was a very kind of dangerous situation town developed, and the fact that I had, from Friday night to Sunday night, I had no way of to call, not moonlight or anything, all towers were down, all this, all, my computer didn't work at all, so if I would have fell downstairs, I couldn't, what do I do, drive to the hospital? Like, I mean, this wasn't, you know, that's isn't the way society works today.
I was.
They shouldn't have been, they shouldn't have allowed the car or cell service down.
Word up, Madam Mayor, for me, we were not aware of any plans to bring down the cell service.
Well, I only got this flip phone, and it didn't work.
Oh, no, neither did mine, yeah, no, none of them did.
Come Sunday night, everything came, I, but I have a Wi-Fi system at home that I plug into my computer. plug into my computer and pick up Telus. That went down for the whole amount of time, so you couldn't have texted anything out. Nobody, none of the seniors in this town could have done anything.
Wayne, I think council was unaware that...
Yeah, well, I'm just letting you know now.
Yeah, I'm just telling you that council was unaware that they were going to shut the power down for the amount of time they did.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we were completely unaware until I got a notice.
Well, that's important, and they had no, they had no care of service, they had to go, they did get it back up later on in the day. The downtown, the people had to shut their businesses down, but they had no power. I mean, and when this could have went on, on Saturday, or instead being Saturday too, with Sunday night.
Council Lambert?
Just to add on to what you say, yeah, we did have no service from, the information that I found, I'm not sure how credible it is, but I believe there was a fire at one of the Telus offices, and that's why there was an issue with their services. There, I heard from another source, there was an issue with the Watt Tower, that's why we had no cell service. So anyone that had home internet connection had Wi-Fi, but if you run, if you have a smart hub or you have a cellphone, then you had no connection. From what I understand, you could still make phone calls because it was still 3G, but there was no LTE or 5G in order to use the...
I, I, flip phone ain't, flip phone, it doesn't have your...
I, I, again, tried calling to see what was going on, and there wasn't even a reported outage for Telus or Bell.
No, no. I was just, I just wanted to bring it up, that's all.
It is very unsafe.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I know, I, I can, I hear you. Just to give you context as well, I mean, I was on call for the operating room for the hospital.
Oh, oh.
Good luck.
Yeah, so I, if you were attached to a landline, that was great, so literally, it was constant check-ins and things like that, attached to a landline, so I completely understand your frustration.
So we aren't, was that because of Adco?
No, we don't think the two events were related. I think, as Council Lambert said, there was no expectation that the cell service was supposed to be out at the same time the power was down. The coverage was planned, and the business, that's why some businesses shut down, because they were warned in advance, and that was so they could finally get those poles up around town. But yeah, the cell service, and I, I agree with, with Council Lambert, right, we were checking, trying to find out what was wrong, and there was no information on Telus's site.
Nothing's ever been released as to what happened.
It went down on Friday night around eleven forty-eight, and then only it came back on until, was it that fall or Saturday evening?
I was saying...
And...
But even texting was intermittent.
Yeah, you couldn't get through.
So I imagine we tried to look into it, but...
There's no information up there.
Yeah. Just to, you know, for the, for the public's sake, like, perhaps, like, these telecommunications companies should, there should be some accountability in terms of even an explanation. Maybe we can get that and put it out. I mean, it's frustrating for you, it would be nice to, to know why, and then, you know, and, and perhaps, like, a lack of a communication channel that could be bettered in the future for a municipality, because it's, I know...
I voted Alberta alert.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and I mean, there's, we can't do anything about it now, but...
Oh, I know.
But, but these kind of things, you know, that, you know, if it happened again, it should be, there should be something different, right? Like, it, it's some sort of notification.
Well, we need to contact Telus and find out.
If they respond.
Yeah.
Yeah. You mean, nobody answers their phone, then?
We have a very difficult time getting anything out of Telus.
Well, then, I'll contact Minister Glubish.
I'll put him on the phone for you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. I mean, somebody's got to be accountable for it.
But just further to Council, well, keys, the town communicated what was going on with the water within a half an hour of a source of water pressure. Accidentally communicated they were bringing the power down, but the telecommunications company couldn't communicate why or to cell phones.
Because they couldn't.
Yeah, and I was around, like, central Eben area, and it was down there too, so it must have been, like, there are none of the debit machines, and none of the, the phones are working in that area.
It was intermittent in Drake Valley, too.
Yeah.
So there should be some explanation.
Yeah, I think.
Always be prepared. Want to add on to that, even with, with fire department, I didn't receive any of my calls until about two hours after it already happened.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if I can respond.
So even that system wasn't there?
Yeah, because it was, because the text messages were intermittent. So I got two hours late.
You guys got a game going.
Yes, go Slade.
Oh, is dude coming out?
Could I have someone adjourn this meeting, please?
Make that motion.
Council Lambert, all in favor? Carrie.